Captain Clark Park.
They do seasonally, yes. We do that in partnership with the county and the port. Specific assignments down there.
We do a portion of Captain Clark Park.
Very small portion.
Not both restrooms.
Yeah. Hathaway Park restroom seasonally as well Sandy Swimming Hole when we get peak usage there during the summer months. So the recommendation this evening on consent agenda is to authorize the mayor to sign the professional service agreement with Midnight Janitorial.
Sounds like we don't have much choice.
Yeah, no kidding. Where are they located again?
Vancouver.
They're based out of Vancouver. I think this SNS was based out of Portland, wasn't it?
Originally. Yeah.
Steve's in Waschugle right now.
Yeah, he's on the side of the river now. He also has contracts with City of Camas and others as well.
Okay.
SNS. When I spoke to Midnight last week, they had offered up as clients Vancouver Housing Authority, Bayview Building Maintenance and Repair and R and R Janitorial as well as others that they've been providing services to. And obviously it's performance based with criteria in the contract.
Do you have any idea why we only got one bid?
We had three contractors pull the bid docs and do the walkthrough to look at the facilities. I can't guess why we only got one submittal. When we advertised in 2012, we got three submittals. SNS obviously was the low bid at that time. So.
Any other questions? Dave, this is on consent.
It's on consent this evening.
This evening?
Yes.
Just to get it going right now, we're kind of in a little bit of a crack between services.
Yeah, we leverage the full sixty days.
Is that why the garbage cans are so full around here?
I don't know which ones. But yes, might be.
The sixty days really just gives us just enough time to run the process.
Procure essentially.
Thanks, Trev.
Yep.
I'm gonna take this one, right. Counsel, as you know, you passed an extension on the moratorium for recreational marijuana recently. And that is valid until September one. It was shorter than the previous ones. It was a thirty day moratorium. We wanted to just very briefly talk about what our work plan is gonna be and kind of the intended approach so that you know what to expect. And then get any feedback on the intended approach if you have any. There's a couple pieces to it. The first is that in our zoning code, working first through the Planning Commission with a workshop and a public hearing with the Planning Commission and then here at the council. We could insert some language that basically makes it illegal within Waschugle for any use that is illegal under local, state, or federal law. So obviously that would apply to recreational marijuana because it is federally illegal. This is an approach that I believe Yakima and a couple of other communities have taken. It's one of.
County, too.
And the county. That's right. Thank you. Took this approach as well.
Excuse me. Does that mean it would be illegal to use it in Waschugle even if you bought it someplace else?
No, it's totally legal.
No.
It's totally legal as long as you don't have more than you can legally have.
This would be a land use provision, so you could not process.
Oh, okay.
Produce, process, or retail.
Yeah, okay.
Right. So we wouldn't have any of the uses that are contemplated in I-502 for that industry. Until such time as they were consistent with all levels of government. And at this point, it would be federal law that would be trumping. It's a very, very simple mechanical fix, one line in our zoning code. So it's a very, very simple and straightforward approach. However, the policy question in front of you, if that is what ends up coming through, is essentially banning it in Waschugle. So just make that clear. That's what you would be looking to do. Based upon the input that we've gotten so far, we feel that that's maybe where the council is leaning. So.
Well, let's talk about that.
Yeah.
I'm not for banning it.
I'm sure.
I am not for banning it. But if that is where the council wants to go, rather than doing these rolling moratoriums, moratoria. Which I think have some dubious legal basis regardless of whether it's marijuana or anything else, just doing moratoria sequentially. There's a case that came out of Brainbridge Island that invalidated that practice. I would prefer to have something that where we just do it and get it done with. I don't, as I said before, I don't particularly like it in the zoning code. Zoning codes are meant to regulate land uses and impacts of certain uses on adjoining land. And that's not what we're doing here. We're basically, we're motivated by an opposition to legal marijuana. And I just don't think that's an appropriate tack to take. But I'm willing to just get it done with and set aside so long as we have an advisory vote of some kind where we have to give some public input. Because I don't particularly care to make decisions like that for everybody else where it can be relatively easily understood.
And counsel, that would be the other branch of this work plan, if you would, is the potential for bringing a resolution to you by the deadline for our November ballot. That deadline is in early August, so your last meeting in July would be your last regular meeting where you could place anything on the ballot if you wanted to do that. I will mention that the final survey, that's a community survey that's going to go out into the community, does have a question on this issue. It's not an advisory vote. It's not as significant as that. It's a random sample survey scientifically valid. But it could provide some input and we'll have those results in mid-July. And you could certainly contemplate those results as you contemplate this issue or whether you want to do an advisory vote.
And that question, that particular question asked them for, basically it gives them the opportunity to say yes or no on all three uses individually. So are you in favor of retail or not? Are you in favor of production or not? Are you in favor of processing or not within the city of Waschugle? So potentially somebody, people could say, hey, I'm fine if they want to grow it and process it. As long as you guys are gonna create security land use and buildings and all that kind of stuff, but just really don't want to see a retail operation down on the storefront. So that's the way the question is, is put into that survey portion.
I'm having, I'm disappointed in the way the state is handling this. Yesterday, there was a big article in The Columbian about the money being able to bank the money. When you have large cash businesses, you're attracting an element that makes a community vulnerable. And the state hasn't stepped up and said that they're going to give us some resources for law enforcement or to help us in any way as a community. And I think that's a big obstacle in my mind until they resolve the banking issue and the safety issue. So I would vote to ban it at this point in time until the state comes forward with a little more what I would consider responsible reaction to this.
Banking site isn't part of the state's responsibility. That's a federal regulation that the banks are staying away from.
I understand that. But I talked to the bank over, is it Numerica, the credit union in Spokane? And they're only doing it for Spokane. They are banking for them and it's credit union. I didn't understand quite how they're getting around the federal or knocking around it. But money is an issue and it would bring an issue into our community. I mean, it would bring a crime issue into our community just because it's large amounts of cash that are not being able to be banked. So, so yes, it may be a federal issue, but it, okay, so it's the federal and the state bringing it together to make this work for. If the state wants this business to work, they have to make it so it works for the communities.
And we won't know.
We hope.
Or it doesn't.
So far, they've said, no, we don't need to do that. So.
Well, then, then we don't have a responsibility to honor their licenses, it seems to me.
And we'll know next session, but that won't be until next year.
That's right.
It may know.
And if we ban it, we're sending a message to the state also, it seems to me.
It's my own view that an outright ban is putting your head in the sand and saying, no, not here. And on the other hand, it's already here. At some point, and I don't mean next week or next month or maybe even this year, I believe we are going to have legal retail in Waschugle. And to me, it makes sense that we need to ramp up in thinking about that. Among other things, we need some very, very serious regulation of advertising. We cannot let clown-suited sign shakers be peddling marijuana. That's just can't happen. And so I would encourage the Planning Commission and staff to begin thinking about what would it look like to regulate this. Off the top of my head, production and processing. You're talking about producing and processing a drug that at this point in time is in the same category as Vicodin and Oxycodone. Actually, it's in a higher category than Vicodin and Oxycodone. So if we were producing those in the city of Waschugle, we would require a number of things, one of which was no public view. You can't see it. No advertising. Twenty-four hour security, serious security. And no onsite consumption.
Well, that's already illegal.
And so that, those kinds of things, we need to start talking with our other communities about what they're thinking about that. My concern about the resolution that basically says not while it's federally illegal. Ultimately, I believe that it will become legal under federal law. And the question then becomes, how much notice do we have? If they say, okay, now, then we don't have anything ready to go. And we really need to be ready to go when the feds change their mind.
I believe we already have a lot of it ready to go. If council were to say tomorrow.
I haven't seen any of it, so.
We haven't, we haven't workshopped any of the particulars with the council. We haven't workshopped any of the particulars with the Planning Commission because our direction heretofore has been to wait to see what the legislature is going to do. There was this AG's opinion that was pending. The AG's opinion came. There's been quite, our perception has been, and it's not a unanimous council, certainly. Our perception has been heretofore that a majority of the council has pointed us towards a ban. And so we haven't, the mayor and I haven't asked Mitch to expend that energy in that direction.
I don't, I don't think it's a very high priority, I mean, in terms of drop everything else. Because it's unlikely that the feds are gonna do anything before sometime next year. And, and so, but I'm just concerned that given the capriciousness of the federal government, they could do something rather quickly and leave us flat-footed. And, and our, I mean, the thing that we have said consistently is that we want to be smart about this. We want other people to make the mistakes that we can learn from. And so that's, that's what I would ask, is that we need to start thinking about this. I wouldn't, as I said, I wouldn't make it a huge priority. But Planning, Planning, Planning Commission, I don't think you want a resolution out of them, but they need to start thinking about it. They need to have it on their mind.
Jennifer?
Well, I think I've made my opinions and my support for the ban fairly clear at past council meetings that we've discussed this. And I would absolutely support a ban if that was brought forward in whatever form. If it's in the zoning laws, then I would absolutely support it. And I just do not believe that my constituents are in favor of having this type of business, these types of businesses surrounding this product in our community. And I will stand behind that.
Thank you, Jennifer. I agree. And as far as the advisory vote, it seems that our state is, or our community, I should say, is split fifty-fifty within a few votes. And I don't know why we would have to go out for another advisory vote. I just feel like when something's that close, you have representatives that have to make that decision.
You all are pretty close to split fifty-fifty. You're following the.
But.
Can I respond to that?
No, go ahead.
There's a Gallup poll that came out, did a nationwide poll. It showed opposition to legal marijuana in November of 2012. It showed a ten-point shift to the prolegalization side and a majority in the country now supports legalization of marijuana. I suspect that since Waschugle is part of the United States, that that would probably have applied here as well. So there's a good chance that the opinion has shifted since 2012.
Having spent a year of my life studying the problem of drug treatment in California. What I discovered was, there's a great deal of human wreckage scattered around the state. From people who started with cigarettes, went to marijuana, went to the hard stuff. Some of them went the route of pills initially, but a lot of them went through marijuana and route to hard drugs. I don't want to do anything that would make that opportunity easier here. I'm for banning it. I'm for banning it permanently if we can get away with it legally. And in terms of trying to regulate the crowd that's gonna be smoking marijuana. My experience in California was with, was that this was a group who didn't particularly subject themselves well to regulation. They tended to be on the other side of the law, acknowledge that they were there, and look for support. And in California, they got a lot of it. And law enforcement more or less swore off of it for a long time simply because of that. They didn't want to put it in front of a jury of sympathetic people. So I, I don't think that the people in Waschugle are fifty-fifty on this issue. I, I think that you'll find that, and I recognize that it was fifty-fifty on the Prop 502. I would hope that they've learned more since then. There's been a coordinated campaign from the federal level to take the sting out of marijuana and make it socially acceptable. They put a lot of money into it. I don't see that having much effect in Waschugle. And I'd like to see us make the right decision here. And to be honest with you, I don't care if it is fifty-fifty. I was elected to make decisions based on the best knowledge that we could get. And to study the issues and make those decisions. And so I'm not gonna stick my finger in the political winds and say, what's, what do you think out there? People elected me to make decisions. I'm gonna make a decision. The decision I'm gonna make is, I'm gonna do everything in my power to keep that stuff out of here. It's harmful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question for Don English. If we ban it, and I assume a ban can be changed at some point by this council or another council. But if we ban it, are we open for a suit by the man that was issued a license to sell in our city? The state issued him a license.
Nobody's been issued a license.
He won the lottery that.
Oh, he won the lottery. So what does that?
Means he's first in line for a license, but he has to meet all of their requirements.
And he hasn't done that yet.
Hasn't been issued a license yet.
He has started the process and we have commented back to the Liquor Control Commission on his application.
Okay, so if he got a license, or if he doesn't and somebody gets that license, can they sue the city?
Well, anybody can sue anybody for anything. I mean, that's the.
And win.
The, the, the short answer. The longer answer is, I think we're in pretty good shape right now. The Attorney General's opinion that we've looked at real carefully seems to feel that we can ban it.
There's some disagreement about that, Don.
There's some disagreement about it, but, and that's an Attorney General's opinion, it's not the court opinion, but it gives me a good thought that we can do it.
It gives us something.
It gives us something to, hold on. If that hadn't come out that way and there'd be some issue about it, I'd be a little more cautious on it. But I feel pretty good that we're in a pretty good position on that.
A total aside, the windows of the paraphernalia shop down there by Pedro's, that little shopping where Kentucky Fried Chicken used to be. They're all boarded up. Evidently, they were broken. And I don't know what that means. Is that in Camas?
Yes.
In Camas, yes.
That's Camas, so we wouldn't have seen it on our police blotter.
You had mentioned the response to the State Liquor Board regarding the application that the city sends. Is that confidential?
No, I believe it's up there. Record's here.
So we would have access to get a copy of that? Okay.
Yes, I'd like to see that.
I would like to see that.
Yes.
Are you able to talk about what your response to them was?
Our response was that we were not in favor of the applicant or the location. And we put in a follow-up, not a follow-up, we put in an accompanying letter that basically encapsulized most of the, I think, twenty-seven police calls to that facility in the last year and a half.
Thank you.
And asked that they deny the application.
I applaud you.
But keep in mind, the liquor board can do what they want. They just ask our comment. That doesn't mean that they go off of our comments.
But we want to keep doing the right thing.
Those recommendations came from the, from the police department, the police chief himself, just in light of that operator and what our experience has been with them on a legal business. So.
If, if he does not get the license, then how, what is the process? Do they draw again?
Yeah, no, there are six that they've already drawn. So there's next one down, next one down, next one down, next one down.
Are there that many applicants in Waschugle?
I believe we had six valid, five or six valid addresses.
I think they were all here last.
Some of them were.
Excuse me.
By the same entity, but at different locations. But.
Under different names.
The next in line is a different entity, as far as I recall.
So how would it work since it's the same entity, they just changed locations? Does the liquor board look at them as separate applications?
They look at them as separate applications, but every application that they are in review of, they would ask the city for comment, just as they do on liquor licenses as well. So it came down to basically the same operators. We'll still rely on what their track record has been in the city so far.
We treated that no differently than we would any application that would come to us from the Liquor Control Board for permits around serving alcohol and different levels of serving alcohol. Really, they're asking the same questions of us in the I-502 situation that they are asking in the, in their liquor regulatory function. So we treated it basically just the same as that, checked in. We certainly have received some advocacy in the community expressing concerns about that entity and location. But what we did is stick to our facts and treated it like we would any application that the Liquor Control Board would get.
Real quick, the location that they chose is hard to get to from fourteen but easy to advertise to fourteen. That's one of the things that I would like to deal with when we start going through is we need, because if that's treated as highway commercial, they can put up a sign that's, I forget, twenty-five feet taller than the road surface. And don't want to go there. Then something for Don to think about is, one of the things that's a big heartburn for me is the declaration that Parker's Landing Park and the Marina Park are not parks.
They're not municipal parks.
Because the port is a municipal corporation. What could we, is there anything that we could do that makes them parks under the law? Similar question with the Angelo Fields and the Dog Park.
We could seek legislative remedy to broaden the definitions to include those sorts of things.
Several cities have, I know, have, have simply declared things to be parks. And I don't know how much standing that's gonna have, but.
I think we've already had the presentation from Mitch, that his takeaway from liquor control and the Attorney General and municipal research is it either has to be owned or managed and maintained by the city.
Well, there are several cities that disagree with that, and so I'm curious.
We can watch it and look at that.
So, yeah, I'm just asking the city attorney to look at that. Thank you.
On the advertising side, you need to be very careful on that side. You're under an entire First Amendment rule, which, especially on signage right now, says, and it's fifty-five feet, I believe, fifty or fifty-five feet. Because we changed it in places like Wesley's and da-da-da, because of the height of the highway. And it's fifty or fifty-five feet. Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, over the grade of the highway at the sign.
I don't know that it's fifty-five feet above the highway grade. I think it's above grade, but it calculated a difference additive to the previous regulation to account for the height of the burming up of the road. The real dilemma with advertising commercial speech, which is what these advertising issues are under the First Amendment, is you can regulate the time, place, and manner, but you can't regulate the content. So whatever we do would apply to everybody. And it could be that we would want to prescribe regulations in our sign code that would be applicable to all uses in order to circumvent the types of things that you've.
It's my understanding out there, state regulation of advertising of spirits and wine.
There is on premises, or at least there used to be.
This would be on premises. We don't allow off premises.
Yeah, there are, you're right. There are some certain types of things that I think even have federal.
Right.
Federal, federal regulations. And, you know, potentially there's a remedy to the, to the content neutrality. It's a very established, I mean, I defer to Don, but it, it's a very established constitutional dynamic when you're regulating commercial speech.
I understand that.
I think it's more political speech. That's, yeah. Even, we ran into it over in Lake Oswego as well, because we wanted to put a sandwich board out, or a Realtor's sandwich board, and the city said we couldn't. And we went back and sat through a whole thing with the city attorney. And they finally came back and they said, you know, you have a point. If we allow them for Realtors, we have to allow them for anyone. We cannot go off of the content. With your sign twirlers, whether it's the guy in green and yellow, or whether it's the young man down here for Papa Murphy's, or whether it's the cheerleaders for the garage, or the car wash that's happening in a parking lot, it's the same thing. They no longer would be able to do it if you want to outright.
I see what you're saying. You can't discriminate one commercial over another. There's, there's even a higher standard for political. We ran into that with political signage that you, basically it's hands-off there.
I think Vancouver put some special sign regulations in for, in their ordinance. You could look for the opinion that's behind that.
Certainly worth looking at what the rules are on liquor and wine.
Yeah, there may be some state stuff there.
Dave?
Mr. Mayor, we weren't aware of the good work you and the staff were doing. You appear to be ahead of us here and you've been hiding your light under a bushel basket. Thank you for seeing this issue coming and doing what you've been doing.
Well, like I said, I believe that Mitch is very prepared to come forward. I believe he has generated and collected and gone through an awful lot of information as well. If we wanted to pull the trigger fairly quickly, again, it's gonna go through Planning Commission, it's gonna go through everywhere else. But internally, we've had enough discussions that I think if we gave him a day, put all of that to paper and come back to you all with one or two recommendations along a certain line, even if it's allowing them and under what conditions. I believe he would be able to start that ball rolling very quickly.
Do we have the figures? And I'm sure that the chief knows this. What is the percentage of marijuana crimes in our community? I mean, how many people are being picked up, driving, or incarcerated, or somehow breaking the law while under the influence of marijuana? I mean, we.
Don't know that. We'd have to, we'd have to ask him to try and pull the data.
Okay. I mean, I, I'm not, most of what we all know is anecdotal. And I don't know how big of an issue this is to the police.
And that's a broad question.
Yeah.
Because it's not just driving, it's not just possession. We don't really deal with possession anymore because the kind of prosecutor isn't gonna prosecute them, so we're not gonna arrest them if nobody's gonna prosecute them. It just jams the system. So we're not going to arrest them if nobody's going to prosecute them. It just jams the system. So unless it's an ungodly amount of marijuana, unless it's a operation that is where the currently illegal manufacturer in the city or distribution in the city, we're really not getting involved in it.
I would assume if they thought somebody was being endangered because of this, they would step in. Am I incorrect?
I think it just depends on the circumstances. I think more of what you're seeing, more of what we are likely experiencing now may be a little bit on the driving, still under the influence, whether it's alcohol or any kind of medications or drugs. But I would venture to guess from pieces I have heard that it's more a problem within families and friends and strong arms and schools and those areas versus where we would normally be writing reports that you'd see in the newspaper.
I guess I'm thinking domestic violence, because when I rode with the police, we went to several homes in the course of an evening where it was alcohol-induced domestic violence. I mean, that definitely was an issue. And I thought, is marijuana that kind of an issue?
We could certainly ask him for the statistics he has. But just as an anecdote, you may have seen in the report that chief sent out, our new dog isn't trained, and I forget the verb that they use, to go after marijuana. It's other narcotics, but not marijuana anymore, and it's because of I-502.
Officer Castro, the school resource officer, may have some interesting information also.
So I think I have direction where
Just, I know, I understand we're the minority here, but I think the pleasure of the council is to just ban it. No sunset date, make it a permanent ban, do it by the zoning code, which means it also isn't subject to a referendum, correct?
I believe that's correct.
So the only, if we happen to get it wrong from what our citizens want, there's absolutely no vehicle to, for them to review our decision, even through referendum, because zoning laws aren't subject to referendum. And the council would not, even with that knowledge, the council would not want an advisory vote as well. Is that the
That's, that's
Is that where everybody is?
That's my opinion.
Okay.
Can that be changed at some point in time?
You can change your mind anytime.
Okay.
Change the zoning code, absolutely. You just have to go through the Planning Commission back here.
Keep trying. Keep trying.
Dave?
Thank you. I'd like to use this issue to segue into a favorite pet peeve of mine. We mentioned, you mentioned a sunset on this. And I would hate to see a sunset on this, but I would accept the sunset on this if we could get a sunset on everything that we do in the way of ordinances. So that every X number of years, we're reviewing what we do.
I'm not opposed to that. There might be some exceptions, but I'm not opposed to that conceptually. In this case, the sunset that I originally suggested would have been July 1 of next year, because that we would know what the legislature's done, we'd have a better idea what the feds are going to do. And, you know, I just, I would accept that. But I also want to consult our voters. This is an issue that's relatively easy to understand. There's not a lot of explanation. Marijuana, yes or no? The election results were ambiguous. There's some evidence that opinions are changing on this. And I know that we, you know, we have a concept here that we want to do right from wrong, that we can always discern that. But I represent the citizens, and I'm willing to abide by what they say.
I think, I think it's not an easy issue to understand. It's very complex. It deals not only with the physical realities of the drugs, but it also deals with social interaction of people who take these things for a long periods of time and the effect that it has on them, the detrimental effect. And so I, I see my obligation as doing what we need to do rather than putting it on the ballot. I would not vote against putting it on the ballot. I might abstain. But I see where you're coming from. I just don't agree with it. I, I'm not thrilled about the idea of putting it on the ballot. I agree with you that it's our job to make the decision. I, on the other hand, if you want to ban, then I would be much happier with a July 1 sunset. I guess that's it. I do observe, and it's caused quite a quandary for me, if you go back and read your oath of office, we're in a tough spot here, doing anything to legalize marijuana, to advance that. My reading is that it is violation of our oath of office. Just a comment.
Which law? This federal law or state law?
Federal law, which is mentioned first.
We swarmed up both, actually.
Yeah, no, I get the conundrum. Okay, any other questions on I-502?
We know what to do. Thank you very much for the discussion. It's very helpful for us.
Resolution for a waterfront vision plan.
Counsel, as you recall, when the students were here recently to present their vision plan, Mitch mentioned that we would bring a resolution back that we were wanting to do with the port that would offer our recognition for their effort and recognize that effort and point to that plan as one of the tools that we use as we guide development at the waterfront. So tonight you have in your packet a copy of the resolution that the commissioner's considered and signed. And it is, at its base, it's a resolution in support of the plan and of the student efforts. They've approved it and signed it. It doesn't commit us to any specific action. It simply points to the plan as something that we will use as a guide as we move forward and expresses our partnership with the port on the waterfront project.
I like the resolution. I think the kids did a good job. I'm very concerned about the section that says we'll use it as a guide. I don't want to be tied to this for a variety of reasons, which I don't think I have to explain to this group. You pretty well know where I stand on these things. And so I'd like to take that paragraph out of it.
Which paragraph?
The paragraph that says we'll use it as a guide. I think it's the first one or the second page.
Guiding a reference is pretty innocuous.
I, and you know, I didn't see it that way. I thought that was pretty strong. Guiding a reference.
It doesn't say it's rules. It's more like guidelines.
Would my colleagues please advise me? Am I tilting at windmills here?
Yes.
I, my objection. The resolve on the, at the bottom of the last page, the key word there is aspiration. It's not a commitment. And then in the last resolve, living document that requires recurring updates and planned revision opportunities. That seems to me that that takes care of any concerns about being wedded to a plan.
Just like the constitution's a living document, right, Paul?
I'm sorry?
Just like the constitution's a living document.
Joyce, did you have a comment?
No, I think that took care of it. I think it's a concept. And I think that as a concept, we can accept it. I was very impressed with what the students did. And bringing fresh eyes into our commu, young, fresh eyes into our community. I read the report again last night, and I thought that was, it was good. It was interesting. And I was very pleased with the work they did, but I didn't feel committed to anything.
Yeah.
Thank you for sharing that with me.
Other questions?
Yeah, I was just going to make the same comment that I just see. It's very broad. I mean, it's high level, I mean, the wording in here, high-level concept, long-range plans, aspiration, that sort of thing. It's just, it just tells me it's a guide and a reference.
So the moral of the story is when you're going to be overrun five to one, you acquiesce, right?
Sooner than later?
Why not?
Gracefully.
Any other comments, questions? Paul, Steve, New Market Tax Credits, Phase Two. Welcome.
So
Everybody's running away from you guys.
Right, go to the room. As promised, Steve has wrapped up his conclusions from Phase One analysis. And so I've asked Steve to come here, give the highlights of what his findings were. And then obviously, we're here to also try to get a head, at least a head nod. My understanding is you may not take a formal vote tonight, but at least get a head nod for us to start doing some of the mechanical things behind the scenes that we need to do to move on to the next phase. So with that, I think Steve is prepared to do some highlights, and then we'll answer any questions that you have.
And I'll keep the comments brief. Steve Brooks, 3545 Northeast 25th Avenue, Portland, Oregon, 97212. Thanks for having me back. As we talked about this before, and again, you know, and coming from the point of view that I understand there are many points of view about the program itself and how it operates. And, you know, for me as well, I've worked with this for almost 10 years now. And in, as a, what I've seen in my research about this community in particular, to the extent that it, in my mind, confirmed what I kind of assumed, is while it's true, it also is, I think, true that there's a clear sense that this area is really not in a position to take advantage of the program without some kind of a local resource that is kind of managing that process internally. The, just as a, as a general concept in terms of how the state of Washington is covered by the program, there appears to be two active community development entities, what I'll call CDEs, in the state of Washington. And by active, I mean have received awards of credit allocation since about 2009. One of those operates out of Seattle. The other is an organization called Craft III. They are a community development bank. They have not received an allocation within the last two or three years. I don't believe they applied this year. They primarily do small business lending in rural communities. And I'm pretty sure they do lending in this area as well, but they're primarily a commercial bank. Beyond any local CDEs, you really have to go to organizations that fund programs on a national level. As you know, there's a group in Portland called United Fund Advisors. They did receive an allocation just this local, last round. I called them yesterday. I used to work for them. They're still investing half of their proceeds in New York City. And so they're, they have, over the last couple of years, said they want to do more local projects. They did actually fund the Blanchet House in downtown Portland. I don't know if you know
The which?
It's called the Blanchet House. It's a, it started out as a small program to provide meals to homeless. And it's expanded, and now they have a residential program. And so that was the last program they funded locally. But primarily, they don't operate in the local area. The other CDEs I think I listed on the report are Philadelphia, San Francisco, Boston, Arizona, and most of them don't basically provide the funding for areas like this as a general principle. You can go meet with them and ask for funding. Also, US Bank and KeyBank have allocation awards. They all literally have hundreds of projects on their list of potential investments. At the same time, after talking to Paul and reviewing the projects that you have proposed, in my opinion, they're right in the wheelhouse of the program itself. Projects such as the Library and Mixed Use Project is exactly the kind of project that the CDFI Fund likes to fund, because it has a public benefit element, it has commercial. I'm not sure if that one has a residential component. I can't remember.
At this point, it does. Maybe this might be a good way of just talking about the projects, and then I'll let you continue.
Yeah, sure, that's fine.
So Renee in my office has helped me meet with different individuals regarding projects that we knew about. Doesn't mean it's the comprehensive list of all projects, but we're trying to get a sense of what types of projects have people been looking at, what's out there that might draw good community support, and also draw great attention from Department, ultimately the Department of Treasury, in trying to get an allocation. And for downtown Washougal, the library project is one that has drawn quite a bit of interest. I know in talking with Wes in the past and others that they've been looking at trying to put something together. And so we tried to come up with a project that would be large enough, but not too complex to try to be a first project for Washougal. Also, speaking with the port, looking at what their plans are over the next two to three years, trying to get a sense of what they're programming for additional space. That's how we came up with the two projects out there. And I think we pretty much described that those are user-oriented at this point with some space that would be left over for us to be able to attract more tenants into the area. Because one of the issues we're running into is every time they get a space available, it gets leased up. And that's a great thing, because that means more companies, more jobs. But we want to be able to create that much more economic activity out here. And then the one that we came up with, in Camus's one, from a conversation that we had with a particular entity last summer, the mayor and I met, was someone that owns a block. It's, the project that they envisioned for that block is much larger than what they need, so they'd be looking to do a joint venture. And so the description of that project is kind of the downfall of that, of that discussion from last year. So we're at a point right now where we've got a general sense of what we think the top four projects are. We're also meeting with other individuals to get a sense of what other projects are out there, so that we build a pipeline. Just in case we get a project that stalls out, if we have an allocation, we want to be able to further some of the other projects in the Camus-Washougal area as well. So that's how we came up with the projects, and I'll let Steve continue with his findings.
Yeah, and it's, you know, you always, when I talk to people about the program, we always run into the point where you, it's hard to connect between the practical application of the program and the technical aspects of it. When I first started working at United Fund Advisors, I'd been there three days, and I ran into a friend downtown. And they said, oh, how could you work for those guys? That's just, you know, that's some kind of scam, where they've got this backroom deal with the city, and they've got, the federal government is funding these projects. And that perception is, you know, the more I've done this, the more I think, feel like it's legitimate in one hand, because the program is not, it's a government finance program essentially. And it's hard to rationalize that with the operations of government. On the other hand, communities invest in local businesses and local resources in lots of different ways. And this is a very efficient way, from the federal government's point of view, to forego some revenue in the short term and over the long term, increase development and job production in low-income communities, and also get their money back. So while, you know, So while, you know, I'm not going to spend a lot of time defending the program and its complexity, I think it's too complex myself. On the other hand, you know, I, I have seen the program work and I've also seen, you know, it's from, based on my experience, the communities like Washougal can be very successful in petitioning the government essentially to direct these resources at this specific community, primarily because the organizations that already are doing this are looking outside and really there is a gap. And the program is designed to close gaps in the first place. And so I think in cases like Washougal, particularly given your situation with no, I mean, there just aren't very many CDEs locally, either in Oregon or Washington, that it's really, really difficult to attract that kind of investment without a local presence. And so, you know, I'm, I'm happy to discuss any of the details of the program, any of the details of the local CDEs or how the investment works, but that's.
If I could say it differently, we're having trouble. We would have trouble without our own CDE of getting attention, getting the attention of other CDEs to present projects out of here. The way around that is to form our own CDE to, and we will get adequate attention from that entity.
As a practical matter, it would be at least three years in order to close a transaction with a CDE that was, that's currently in existence now, if you could get them to invest in the first place. I think the likelihood of, of attracting the attention of a CDE to come in and do one project in this area is pretty low. To do three projects is essentially impossible. And to get anything to, to bring that attention in and then actually get the project funded would be at, at least a three-year process, in part because none of the projects are ready to go yet. And so you're, you're starting at the back of a very long line, working your way through. It's just, as a practical matter, it's not, it, it would be two or three times as expensive as starting your own organization. And then you wouldn't control where the credits go or how they're invested. So that's.
The federal government never gives without asking for something.
Absolutely.
What restrictions are they going to put on us? Are they going to tell us how the building has to be designed, how the roads have to be done, how the traffic has to flow? What, what are the restrictions?
You can look at the restrictions in two ways. The program is restricted in that the projects must, in order to, in order to, in order for the CDE to place money into a project, that project has to be located in a qualified census tract. So, and which is basically demographics. So poverty rate, median family income, unemployment rate are the three.
We've got several.
You have several. The program is then designed to place all the risk of losing the credits because there is a penalty if, if a project doesn't meet the statutory requirements. The penalty is actually on the, the investor that purchases the credit rights. So the mechanism for enforcing the program actually comes from the investors and not the federal government. There are some reporting requirements. You know, every federal program, you have to file an annual report, describe your project, give you the information you want. One of the reasons that these projects have so much paperwork is because, for example, Standard Insurance purchases about $100 million of tax credits a year. They use it to write off their tax liability. They require that the CDE meet certain reporting standards, sign certain documents, provide guarantees, but it's all done through private enforcement mechanisms, if you want to put it that way.
I'm not so much interested in that because that's the administrative process.
Right.
But what restrictions are they going to put on what we do with the money in terms of how we build?
Okay. And I'll take it another direction. There, there are statutory requirements on what you cannot use the money for. So you cannot use the money for residential rental housing. You can't use it for golf courses, tanning salons.
Driving theaters.
Driving theaters.
Oh, rats.
You. You cannot use it for land banking or for other purely investment expenditures. So you can't do a building and then buy $10 million worth of art for the building. Again, you can't land bank, but you can use it for commercial mixed-use development, for business lending, equipment purchases, operating expenses of a business. The, again, it's not, it's not the, what the, let me see if I can.
Let me approach this a different way because we're not connecting here.
Yeah, I know.
And it's, it's my fault for not explaining it well.
No, no.
We have a series of, of standards that we use when we build buildings.
Right.
Design streets and that sort of thing. They come out of our planning commission, they go through the council and they're, a lot of them are in ordinances.
Right.
Is there anything in this that would preclude our using those?
No, no, no. No, not at all.
Okay.
And again, it's a.
That's my concern.
It's the, and again, if you think of it as the government is, is trying to entice private investors to come and build a building where they wouldn't ordinarily, the building itself, they don't care about in specifically, or the business you invest in. The focus is the government's up here trying to attract investors and lenders. So it's, that's where the regulation is.
So if we decide to paint the buildings white that come out of this project, they're not going to say, "No, it has to be yellow." If we say it's got to be two by six construction, they're not going to come back and say, "Nope, minimum two by 12."
But they're also not going to say, "Well, since this is a federal program, you have to give the borrower a break." And, you know, you have to have special rules about how you can't default because all of the regular mechanisms for, you know, commercial default are all still in place.
And then you still have that pesky payback. Paul?
I want to see, like Brent, I want to comment this a slightly different way. I want to see if I understood something that you said correctly. Basically, the large national and regional CDEs are not interested in the kind of projects that we want to do. On the other hand, for a number of reasons, the Treasury Department finds this attractive. So in some ways, our CDE would score more highly with the Treasury Department and therefore have grants available than we would score with people who already have grants.
I would say yes.
Yeah.
I would say yes.
That was my take.
In general, in general, yes. I mean, part of it is, is a friends of the family issue.
Right.
Anybody, anybody who runs a CDE is going to answer the phone from a call from somebody they know. And so part of it is, is access. But in general, that's correct. It's that these kinds of projects that you have here are the kinds of projects that get funded all over the country by New Market Tax Credits.
Right.
The ones that get funded are a small percentage of the ones that could actually get funded.
Right.
And a lot of the differential between what gets funded and what doesn't is proximity to the funder, personal knowledge, access. There is, I think I said before, is a grooviness factor. So having a public library be a, a part of a mixed-use development within a city is, is groovier than a three-story office building because it has all of the, the public benefits and you're really subsidizing a public building. And so that's, but, so that would be a potential project that a CDE as a generic matter would be interested in, but then you have all the other hurdles you have to get through to get the attention. And so.
But when, when you, when you take that kind of thing, that CDE and those kinds of projects to Treasury, they say, "Oh, yeah, man, cool."
Yeah. If, you know, if you can also prove that you can actually get them done.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hopefully, it's not so much that other CDEs, wherever they are, aren't interested in our projects. A project's a project's a project. It either works or it doesn't work. I would think it's more the CDEs could possibly care less about our area.
Yeah. It's, I mean, you can, you can, again, you can kind of cast it in different ways. It's a limited resource, but it's a valuable resource. And sometimes going directly to get access to the resource from, from who provides it is faster and easier than going to people who have access to the resource, but.
Well, hopefully also Treasury may look at ours, hopefully, and/or other new ones similar to us and say, you know, for some, to some degree, we fund these to tens of millions of dollars to the, some of the same people, year after year, that the money goes into New York City.
That's a factor.
Wouldn't it be kind of neat if we actually kind of broadened where this money is going out to in the areas it's helping rather than just those same ones we do every time?
And that's, that's part of.
Until we raise our own flag.
That's part of the story.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was saying. It's, it's, it seems like with Washougal and what we, especially with the library project and so forth, and given the demographics and seems like that, and the fact that every once in a while, the government likes to do something small rather than fund US Bank again.
Well, yeah, and if I, if I may, as an example, there's a nonprofit in Portland called EcoTrust.
Yep.
And they are, they're commercially oriented in that they invest, they, they try and develop local businesses in rural areas. So they do a lot of natural resource-based economic development work. I wrote their application last year, the last two years, and they've received an allocation in both years. And in part, it's that argument. There are not CDEs, there are national CDEs, but they don't have the capacity to go into smaller rural communities and understand what they need and find projects and help them develop those projects. So if you don't give an allocation to somebody like us, then there's nobody in the rural area that's going to help. It's essentially the same argument on a smaller scale. And, you know, everyone who puts in an application says, "Well, you need to give it to us because we'll do something that nobody else will."
Right.
But that's more true in Washougal than it is in Portland or New York or wherever. So it's, you know, and I don't mean to, to like pitch the whole thing right now, but, but that is, that is part of the approach you take. And, yeah.
No, no.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, you stop me or I'll keep going.
Okay. The mechanics of how the library project would work, and it doesn't have, necessarily have to be mixed-use. We could present it just as a standalone library project.
That would be less attractive.
It would be.
Because libraries tend to be funded locally.
Well, the way, the way it would, I thought the way the library would work is we would agree, reach an agreement with the developer. From the city standpoint, we reach an agreement with the developer to build this library, the, like, if Port Vancouver Library District would reach an agreement with the developer for this project, and they would, the money they had, would have raised for that and devoted to that would be, would go to payoff, pay the developer.
Right.
While this was going on. So that would be the revenue stream to repay the.
So it would be like a public-private kind of a build lease or whatever. Anyway, so I understand, it, it sounds more interesting now.
Yeah.
I mean.
And the, and the mixed-use is something that just makes it attractive to the people that make decisions on these sorts of things.
Right. Well, and another limitation, speaking of limitations, is that the funding can't go to a government entity. So you, there has to be a, a private party that's developing the building.
Okay.
What Nancy Testman had shared with David and I is typically when they see, when she has seen New, New Market Tax Credits used in projects such as libraries, it's developers coming in and using, they're basically buying a charitable asset and their philanthropy through there and getting the credits in lieu of cash.
Yeah, and essentially, the credits bring down the rent that is charged to the city. So it's a less expensive.
That's, that's what I was trying to get at.
Yes.
The other question I have is, I think there's been discussion about the CDE looking outside of our area. And what I'm worried about, a little bit worried about with that is the, Washougal's attractiveness as a CDE destination or a New Market Tax Credit destination might be leveraged for somebody else. And I wonder if there's even been any thought to limiting the geographic scope of where the CDE might operate.
I think that you can establish in the bylaws of the organization and through the advisory board, a very specific set of criteria for analyzing projects and investments so that, you know, start locally if there are no projects. And, and that can be enforced both through the advisory board and through.
Are there advantages and disadvantages to doing that?
Well, and I was just going to say, the, the disadvantage to making a strict geographic kind of limitation is that the, you're really restricting the CDE from being able to keep getting reallocated funds because there just aren't that many projects to do locally. You could, for example, you could, and this was something you talked about with the application, is having a, a business plan where we're going to focus on these two projects and use some of the proceeds. The CDE will reinvest those through a small business loan fund into local businesses. So that's a, that's an approach you can take. But in order to feed that small business loan fund, you have to have a series of projects that are large enough to generate enough revenue. And in an area of this size, that you're going to run out of projects in a.
We could put a preference provision, maybe.
But you don't put a preference provision.
Exactly. And what happens if we have a project locally that stalls out?
And you've still got the funds.
We still have the funds and we still want to keep the funds coming in. And so we may, through a preferential criteria, may have to then reach out. But then we've got those proceeds that come back through that we can still keep some of the other activities that we want to do here locally. So it's, you know, you know, our commitment is we want to do as many local projects as we can that makes sense here. At some point, you know, 20 years from now, there may not be enough projects. Maybe there will be, you know, those communities grow at a pretty good pace. But having the ability to reach out and do one or two projects outside the area may make sense at some, at some times.
And the other aspect of this, the, the small business lending pool, the, to kind of finish up with EcoTrust, that was one of the things we put in the applications, that they committed to taking a percentage of the revenue that they generate by closing these deals and then reinvesting in businesses that are located in proximity to the large transaction they do. So one of their projects was a biomass conversion. And they committed to take a portion of the proceeds that they earned off that one transaction and make low-interest, long-term, small business loans and other kind of investments to local businesses within the, you know, geographic region of that project. So, so that's, I mean, that's, it's not only benefits the CDE, but it's.
I would have, you know, I have, I have, you know, reluctantly, I think I could agree with going outside of the Quita area for this. I would have tiers, though. I mean, I don't want to see, I don't want to see.
One instead of us.
Well, no, I don't want, yeah, and I don't want to see, you know, I'd rather see a project funded in La Center than one funded in, you know, Muncie, Indiana.
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah.
Right, exactly.
And, and I'm, I'm personally and politically opposed to a national service area because that tends to, all money flows to the largest project. So United Fund Advisors did the Seattle Children's Hospital, and then they fill, they did a hospital in, in California, in Sacramento. And that used up most of their allocation one year. It's like, well.
Would it be a problem limiting it to southwest Washington or?
No, 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 no. You can do it by county.
To begin with, we're just talking Clark County because that seems to be geographically large and small enough for startup CDE. Limiting it smaller than that might make it less attractive for us. Making it bigger than that for beginning CTE, CDE doesn't really make a lot of sense because what we're, our mission really is to concentrate here first in Camas-Washougal. And secondarily. And secondarily, maybe find a project or two outside of Camas-Washugal, but Clark County.
Or Washugal and Camas, always.
Yeah.
Not just first, always.
Right, right.
In any given year, a, a project that you thought was going to close, doesn't close, and the CDE still has to get its credits out. But the project can just be funded the next year. So the more, the, the better you are at getting the credits out, the more.
And the proceeds that you speak of are the, is that 3% differential between the 20 and the 17% that self-funds the CDE?
Well, yes.
So, the more projects, the more dollars involved, the more of those proceeds come in that can be used. Okay.
Yeah, I, like you, I, I basically believe that it's not necessarily true that a rising tide lifts all boats, but in the case of Camas and Washugal, our boats are tied together on a short rope. And so if one sinks, the other does, if the other goes up, it pulls the other one up. So I think the length of that rope is what you look at. And I frankly think that Skamania County is someplace that we're on a fairly short rope with. And, and certainly all of Clark County, and, and maybe even a little bit of Cowalts or Wakayam, Wakayakum, but, but mostly Clark and Skamania.
Yeah, especially Washugal, we, you know, there are people who live in Skamania County have Washugal addresses.
Right, right, right.
I'm, I'm a, I'm a big fan of the idea of looking at an area as a, as an economic area based on geography, and not artificial boundaries like counties.
Right.
So, and in my mind, the Columbia River Basin is an economic region. And, you know, this tool can, over time, tie the, the different economic interests along the Columbia River Basin together.
Right.
Or it, it help kind of facilitate that process.
At least Washington side of the Columbia River.
Washington side of the, and that's, in my mind, that's a five to 10-year kind of process. But it's a tool that allows, allowed to have one kind of, one kind of consistent investment policy that, over time, kind of stretches up and down the river area. So, you know.
But our primary focus now is Camas-Washugal.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta get an allocation first, and you have to start small.
Absolutely.
We don't have the capacity, we, this, this CDE would not have the capacity to do projects outside of this area for at least a year, or maybe two. They just wouldn't, it would, nobody would believe it.
Right.
So.
Other questions? You're getting ready to roll onto Phase Two, correct?
Right. So there is, there is on your new business, an item which asks you to authorize Phase Two. The professional services agreement requires that the governing body, that was something that was important to the council, that the governing body specifically authorize movement between the phases. So this is that first check-in between the feasibility of Phase One, and then moving into Phase Two. And then there'd be another check-in between Two and Three. So that is on the agenda later.
And no more city money's involved, though, at this point.
Correct.
It's money that we've already discussed. We, we were, have only been invoiced for Phase One.
Okay.
But you've, subject to your phasing approvals, we're aware of, and it doesn't change any of that. Just, just the check-ins that you asked for.
Are you going to be here for the, that action?
I'll be here as often as you want me.
Because I would, you know, I think we need to move on, but I would like to have a little bit, a little bit more detailed description of the projects that we're talking about.
Do you want me to?
Do you want to do that now, or do you want to?
In 15 minutes, I'm going to be. I'm going to be down the road about a half mile, coaching 12-year-old boys.
Do you want to do it now?
I would rather do it now.
Okay.
Just curious about the policy about workshopping in one night and taking action the next night. This came up just two weeks ago on the issue that I asked to move forward, and there's two things here on this agenda, three actually, but one has a time crunch, I can see moving forward on that.
Two have a time crunch.
Two of them?
This one is the second one. We knew that when you did your approval, that we were on a very, very, very tight schedule in order to be successful.
Maybe I was outside, because I missed the beginning, I didn't know there was a time crunch on this, I didn't hear that.
There is in order to get these applications in this year. That hasn't changed from initial approval.
Right, there's a certain timeline, I need to get Steve moving to set up the CDE, if that's, if that's the desire of the entities, and then he needs enough time to write the application. So it's, from that standpoint, there is, there's, there's a bit of a timing, timing issue.
So you guys are all good with that?
Thank you very much.
Want to talk about projects?
Yeah, oh, yeah, sorry.
We've got 12 minutes. Okay.
Sorry, it's my last Monday to coach.
No, I just described the projects.
So the, so the projects, and I think we, we put that in the, the application. Is for, for Washugal is a 30,000 square foot add-on to the Foods and Seasons building. So what the port realized from Foods and Seasons as they were in the middle of that, constructing that 21,000 square foot building, is they needed another 8,000 square feet. They're rapidly growing business, they're expanding, they need more space. And economically, from a financial standpoint, it didn't make sense for them to add on at that point in time. Since then, they also have another user that's looking for 12,000 square feet. So we know we have two tenants that need a total of 20,000 square feet. And what we've talked about, Dave Rippon and myself, and consulted a little bit with Steve, is adding an additional 10,000 square feet, so we have a 30,000 square foot add-on. So that we have 10,000 square feet that we can market to direct tenants that want to make decisions here now. They don't want to wait six months or nine months for their space, they want to be in there today. And so far, we've been able to dial in new buildings at a lease rate that's attractive to the marketplace. The second project out there is, we have a significant industrial user that's been looking at Southwest Washington. They still have not made a decision. They don't have to make a decision right away. They want to be in, they've told us they want to be in new space by December 2015. They would, they're, have just completed a space planning exercise, just to try to figure out what's the most efficient way that they could organize, given if they were going into new space, their space, what have you. This is a project that CRDC and Cuida are working together. We did a high-level meeting with the company out at the port a couple of months ago. It's probably been about three months now. But they need about 55,000 square feet. And so what I've described in there as well is, that would be the second building that would be built at Stagewald, and then we would program in an additional 25,000 square feet for other tenants to come in. That project also has a education or learning school, because of the type of equipment that gets fixed on the, the apparatus, without defaulting too much about the company. It takes very specific training.
Sounds like drones.
It's not drones, but it is aerial, and it takes two people to operate it. It takes one to visually know what they're doing, and it takes the other person to operate the equipment. And so they would need 55,000 square feet to, not only do the manufacturing side of things, but also have the educational part, so they're bringing folks in from all around the world that utilize their equipment. They can teach them how to, how to utilize it.
That's attractive.
Yeah. We're, we're still very hopeful. You know, with all companies, they make inquiries, and then they go quiet for a while, and then they, when it gets close to making a decision, then they heat up and wants things done, like, right then and there.
Yeah, the training activity is attractive because of what it does for Best Western.
Yeah, and it's got, you know, downtown shopping, a variety of, variety of things. The third project is the mixed-use project for Washugal. Renee has met with the library. We've got information about what their space needs would be, what they're looking at for a capital budget, how much dollars have been allocated to that so far, and then what is the need for, for their fundraising. So trying to fit that within a much larger project so that we can utilize new market tax credits to underwrite that public space. That's, that's how we've derived where we're at on that project. We've left it generic in location so far. You know, we do know, and it's been no secret, of a local investor developer that would like to do the library project. But it may take multiple parties. You know, it may take someone that wants to do the housing component of a much larger project. So we've left it generic at this point until we can have more certain discussions with individuals that have given us an indication of interest in doing projects, so that we can kind of see how those fit together. And then the fourth project that we have listed is in Camas. So there's a financial institution that was born and raised here in the Camas-Washugal area, and they own a block, and they don't need all the space they're in right now, and at some point are going to move. And so we've talked to them about a much larger project that would have a greater impact on the community from a positive standpoint, so. You know, there are other community projects that we can undertake, and so we are still, we want to build that pipeline. We don't want to just say, well, here's our four projects, please give us an allocation. We wanted to show that we have a pipeline of projects. So we're still looking at other things that we might be able to fund. Steve and I were in a discussion today with a group that are talking about an incubator, and with some entities, they shy away from incubators. This has a, meets a very specific need in the whole metro area. There are three examples where they're fully leased up, getting market rate rents to help support them. And so we're looking at that as a tool to license startup companies and intellectual property from universities that find it difficult to commercialize, to pull that intellectual property, get it out into the marketplace. It's a huge hole right now in the Portland metro area.
So it's not marijuana processing?
Absolutely not. And like I've told.
You could not do that with this.
Exactly. And what I've told, what I've asked from my Cuida board is, whatever both entities decide on marijuana, just let me know. I've got no stakes in any game. I respect everybody's personal.
Federal program you can't use to.
You wouldn't be able to, and I wouldn't even try. That's, that'd be a waste of our time.
Questions?
Not for them, but I do have a comment, as an aside, not, not for this gentleman, but in a minute.
I don't know if you can divulge this, but the bank that owns River View. And they own a block? Is this block vacant? Or are you talking about tearing the wall?
They purchased a block in downtown Camas that would be easy to redevelop. And so, at, you know, and we can go to the property tax records and see that they, that they bought it. At some point, they don't need to be in the building that they're in right now. Because it's essentially a branch bank. It's not the headquarters or the central processing that used to happen back, like, when it first started. So the needs of the, of the organization have changed over time. And so it doesn't mean that they're moving today or tomorrow, or they're going to do this, doesn't mean that project's competitive, you know, of the four projects, I don't mind saying this publicly, I think it's the, of the four projects, it probably ranks fourth. I think the other three projects rank much higher, and are far more attractive in terms of us trying to carry out our economic development objectives.
On the other side, they're already a bank, they already own all but one lot on that entire block, and, well, they have their own cash.
There's that.
Be their own developers, so.
There's that, too. So, you know, each project seems to be unique, seems to have a, the potential to create some good economic opportunity for the communities, and really progresses some of the plans that both cities have envisioned for their downtowns and the port out of Stagewald, so.
Well, at least for the two out at Stagewald, they would be world headquarters for both facilities as well.
And, you know, it's, you know, it's only, you look at that industrial park, it's only been open a year. And we've already got a building, and it's, makes a high impact. It's fabulous to be able to have that building out there now. And I love seeing local business grow, so that's, that's really, it's really cool.
Any other questions, or do you have something?
No, not for these gentlemen here, just as an aside.
Thank you. We'll at least see Steve here in a few minutes. Okay, thank you.
So just to follow up, something to discuss.
Oh, you should discuss it, you're always discussing, because you bet.
I have one comment, and it, it really is just an aside. I will probably be supporting this because it is the will of the council that they move forward with the CDE, and so I will support Phase Two, even though I didn't support it in the beginning. But I, I want, I wonder if we shouldn't take a look at our parking space allocation codes that we put in place for downtown development. Simply because we have a public parking issue, and it's developing as we attract more businesses. And if we have a, a public-private-mixed-use building with library, people needing parking spaces, et cetera, and residential as well, this could be an issue. And so if we're looking at our existing codes with minimal parking spaces allotted for commercial use, this could be a problem for the future. It is a problem. And so I really would like to take a look at what we have in place as far as our laws on building and development for parking spaces for downtown, and potentially change those.
Do you all still have your copies of the Down Center Plan? What the heck do we call that thing?
Chapter in our code is the Downtown Plan, but, yeah, we have.
I know Mitch has sent it out a couple of times to everybody, the, the specific piece itself, but we had that discussion with Mr. Hickey three weeks ago, and we've had other discussions. It's, as you know, one of the things that we tried to forward a couple of years ago was a discussion on establishing some public parking areas in the downtown.
I understand that.
We have very specific reasons that the council, not this council, previous councils, pass the downtown core that allows for higher densities, less parking onsite, and at the same time, we have substandard streets. You can't really park on both sides and be able to pass through real easily, so.
If we have a 30,000 square foot project that's going to be multi-use, with residential, second and third floor potentially, then, and we're looking at, you know, 10,000 square foot for a public library, and that, we've got to have public spaces, period. And I, the more, the better, in my opinion.
We can certainly ask the planning commission to put it on their work plan.
And David.
Can roll that into this project, rather than building a separate parking area. This is.
Yeah, it's bigger than just a single project, though. The, the issues that the downtown has now in regards to parking don't have anything necessarily to do with what happens on one block, or another block, or on another block. It's happening throughout.
I wouldn't like to see yet another parking garage built that is not open to the public for private, commercial-only people living there, so on and so forth.
For the library, it would be open to the public.
But how many spaces are allotted? We don't know.
Yes and no.
Yeah, it should be at least.
Even the Seattle, even the city of Seattle restricts their parking lot use to park to library patrons only. You can't just come park there and go wander off into a store.
So it's the downtown Vancouver, like.
So it's public parking, but it's not unrestricted.
Well, Dave knows this, that, you know, being a former planning director, don't they give awards to planners for planning projects without, without adequate parking? Isn't that the trend in the planning profession?
I think it's, I think it is a trend in, in compact, dense urban settings.
We're not that.
And it raises a conundrum. If you're not going to require that the parking be provided that meets the actual demand, then you have to, you have to have a public parking plan, and that's, I think, what the mayor was getting at, that provides for it otherwise, and the public can take a role in that. So there's multiple ways you can come at it. One is to increase your parking requirements. There is a trend in planning around having maximum parking requirements, and it gets at compact, urban, transit-oriented development. I don't know. And I think that is reflected to some extent in our current provisions. So you can certainly ask that to be dusted off.
In a large extent.
Right, and we can pretend.
We need to look at that, honestly.
We're not, we're not San Francisco, we're important here.
No, we're not, exactly.
We're Washugal.
Right.
Yep. And there's two ways we could look at it, just very briefly. You know, there's one, the broader question of what does our code require, and what should it require, whether we're doing this new market tax credit thing or not. And then the other is if a new market tax cred, credit project in the downtown of the nature. new market tax pred, credit project in the downtown of the nature that Paul was describing could actually happen, which would be fantastic, could we, outside of a regulatory scenario, take care of this issue through the provision of some public parking? And could that be a piece of the project? And how would the financing work for all of that? And that could be a really positive thing as well. So we can look at both of those approaches.
Well, you've got the third, not option out there, but you've got a third piece of that, and we've got to fund a parking plan.
We need a parking plan.
Which is not inexpensive.
Right.
Six figures started to get me a little nervous, but evidently that's...
I think we could do it all out.
I'm about to fall over. I have to eat.
Okay.
Chris, did you...
No, I'm fine.
Can you make a note and hold on to it?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. We are adjourned until seven o'clock.